Okay, we have a packed agenda tonight, so let's, let's get started. Just a quick reminder, if you wish to speak tonight regarding any of the items on tonight's agenda, please fill out one of these forms which are located over there and bring it to me. If you are speaking for yourself, you may have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you may have 10 minutes. Okay. First item on the agenda is to consider the approval of minutes for November 20th, 2019, commissioners.
I made this stand approved as read.
Okay, Metacollar, Metta?
Collier.
Collier, sorry. Motion. And that's a second by Todd McAvoy. All those in favor say aye? Those opposed? Okay. Moving forward, we are going to reorganize a few items on this agenda to accommodate some out-of-town people that have a long way to drive tonight. So we are going to begin with case number PD 2019-009. That is applicant Plaza Park Properties LLC is requesting a rezone of property located at 2741 West Washington, being lot two, block 14.
Before we do that, I have a point of order. We had a, we're supposed to break back the minutes from the September 18th, see?
Yes, and there are some clerical issues with that, and they will bring those forward in January. Okay. Block 14, is that 148 of the city addition to the city of Stevieville, Erazo County, Texas, from R3 multiple family zone to PD plant development district. Okay.
So the applicant is presenting a concept plan for the planned development district for the use of a retail shopping center located at 2741 West Washington. Staff has no objections to this rezone, but would like to see screening between the development and the residential area. They have also proposed a height on the buildings as 40 feet. We would like to impose 38 feet.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak in favor, please state your name and address for the group. And have you filled out one of?
I did, yes. I'm Brandon Harris. I'm with Collet and Associates. We're the developers on this particular tract. So Plaza Park Properties, that's the mobile home park that abuts the Walmart tract. I believe you're referencing the screening proposed on the Lake Granberry tract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, and we're, we're open to that. That's fine. I believe from the, from the back of the mobile station tract all the way back, we, we are accommodating some national retailers. So we've got not a lot of room over there on that side, but we're open to some sort of screening, whether it's shrubs or a fence or something like that. As to the heights, you're proposing?
38.
38. I think we're okay with that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else care to speak in favor of this? Anybody here wish to speak against? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, can I entertain a motion to, for this along to council for approval or denial or approval with conditions?
We're referring to 2019-10?
This is?
2019-9?
2019, yeah, okay. So this is just a long narrow strip.
So it's currently a mobile home park. That mobile home park has two zonings in it. They're wanting to rezone it to a PD.
With, with the qualifications that you stated?
Yes.
So the motion would need to entail that?
Screening at 38 foot.
Change to those numbers, the screening at 38 foot, right?
Well, the, yes. So 009 and 010, case number 010, is going to be the same development. They will have a concept plan, which is what you are seeing tonight. There'll be a development plan at the next meeting, and then they will replat.
Why is there two developers? One's Plaza Park and one's Lake Granberry?
The mobile home is owned by, is the current owner.
Yeah, Plaza, Plaza Park Properties is the current owner. We're under contract.
Okay.
And Lake Granberry owns the other.
So they filed the appropriate paperwork.
I see, okay.
On our behalf.
I see, okay.
So commissioners, I'm looking for a motion. Do you have an understanding?
I mean, we are, but I think we're all.
Oh, everyone's thinking, okay. Thoughts? If, if we could have a motion, we could at least discuss it.
Okay, I move that we approve 29,000, 2019-009 case number with staff recommendations of 38 feet.
Height on building.
Height of multiple seat, 38 feet, and screening.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second. So Todd McAvoy motioned and Metacollar seconded. Okay. So what, what is the confusion? Do you, do we understand what's going on?
Yeah, two things. Because then we're going to turn around and do the same thing or theory. They're going to propose the same changes for 20, 2009-10.
Yeah. So these will all become one eventually.
One flat.
Right. Currently owned by two different people.
I'm with you.
And I'm not aware that there's any residential next to this piece of property at all.
It's all commercial, isn't it?
It's, yeah, and it's Domino's and Walmart and Allsops.
Right.
And plus, plus this other piece of property. So I don't, I don't see a need for screening.
Well, what's the, what's the zoning for whatever land that they don't have?
The screening would be on the, for the back, I'm assuming, back by the, by the junior height.
The, the screening is only.
There's already one there.
Screening is only required for property that abuts the residential property. That was my mistake for putting it on this case for the screening. It should only be put on the.
On the second case.
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't need to worry about screening.
No, just the height of the building on this case.
Okay.
We can amend that, amend that?
Well.
It doesn't matter. It's all going to the.
It's all going to the same.
But there's going to be a fence on the back of the property, right? That continues the Walmart fence.
Yeah, it's in place.
Yeah, it doesn't mean.
On the back of the property?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's fence all around this property.
Right.
When they develop it, it won't be. They're going to rip all that down and develop into the strips of the center.
Correct. I believe, well, on case 009, I'm not sure. I think there is a, maybe a wood fence on the back of that property. As far as 10, 010, I think there's maybe a chain link fence back there. Is it, is it, is it the expectation that we would put a fence on the back of the property as well? Because.
All, all of its back are school property.
Right.
And it's vacant school property.
I, I think, I agree.
I kind of recall when Walmart went in, they required screening because of, because of the school being right there?
It was because of alcohol.
Because of the alcohol sales. So the question would be what kind of stores would be, I, I, it was because of the alcohol sales, they required some sort of screening between?
So these are national retailers. There's no food service or alcohol sales with that lineup in the back?
Okay.
Are you, are you all, do you all have a copy of the concept plan?
We do have that.
Okay. The only potential food users would be in this strip retail building that is adjacent to the mobile, the mobile station, gas station tract. There may be a couple restaurants in there. One or two of those may serve alcohol perhaps, but that's pretty good ways from that property line, so.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, if my secondary will support, to add to the back of the property needs to be covered by either a masonry or a wooden fence.
I'll second that.
I think the only place that we can require a fence is, is that in one residential.
We can, on a planned, planned development, we can require whatever we want. It's planned development.
Yes, sir, I understand.
So I can require them to put where, whatever fence, wherever we so design.
No, that's not.
What do we, we can in a planned development?
And with point of order.
Yes, sir, yes.
This board is an advisory board of the city council.
Correct.
You cannot require anything.
Well, I can.
So we can advise, we could recommend to council, recommend to council.
In our recommendation.
Okay, so in our recommendation to council, we can include some sort of screening, some sort of fencing.
Yes.
Okay.
And they can do with as they see fit.
You can make a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Correct.
Conditions.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't think we had contemplated that. It's the first time it's come up. So I think we would just need to, you know, talk about that internally and figure out, figure that out. Obviously, masonry fence is a pretty costly thing that wasn't in the budget, so.
Wood?
I'm sorry?
I said wood or masonry.
Okay. Yeah, I would just say we need to, we need to think about that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So I just wanted to advise him, the applicant. So they'll make their recommendation to approve with conditions. It goes to council. Ultimately, it's up to city council if those recommendations are upheld or not.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Are we ready to vote? Okay, so.
Are we voting on his motion to amend first?
I have an, I have an amended motion from Todd.
Okay, so we are voting on the amended motion to recommend to council approval of this rezone to planned development with the condition that there is fencing along the back and that building height be no higher than 38 feet. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One no. So that was one no, Justin. All right. This goes forward. Next item is case number PD 2019-010. Applicant Lake Granberry Developers LLC is requesting a rezone of property located at Zero West Washington, being lot three, block one of the Lake Granberry Developers Addition to the city of Stevieville, Erazo County, Texas, from B2 retail and commercial, commercial business to PD planned development district. Karen.
Applicant is requesting a concept plan for a planned development district for the use of retail shopping center located at Zero West Washington. This is going to be located behind Allsops, and the staff has no objections to this rezone. This is where the screening would be recommended between the residential area and the proposed property.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone?
Madam Chairman, also the height of the buildings would be 38 feet.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm in favor of that. Same, same representative, same developer. We're creating one, you know, one shopping center here, so.
And I take it they're not here tonight?
Our development partners are in Charlotte. I'm here representing us from our Dallas office. Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Is there anybody who wishes to speak against? All right, we'll close this public hearing. Commissioners, can I entertain a motion?
I make a motion that it be approved under the conditions that Karen stated.
38 feet building height and screening at the residential.
Between residential and, and the property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. So that was Brewster later, motion, and Bill Muncie seconded. All the, uh, do we need to discuss?
Yes, I'd like to discuss. So we just passed the other one with the privacy screen in the back, and the reason why I passed that the other time, so I have to make a motion again to pass it, is Walmart already has it. There's a school right behind it. It's a consistency issue, number one. Number two, you have, when you're running into commercial property versus a school or residential, you should have a buffer. We only have residential currently, and that creates that buffer zone. It's pretty consistent across the bigger metropolitan areas anywhere else where there's a commercial zone. And so that's all I'm trying to keep where there's a, there's a, there's a, when you're looking, you're not seeing the back of dumpsters and everything else while you're sitting at the deal. So I would propose an amendment to include as a condition a privacy screen, whether it be masonry or wood along that fence back line.
Okay.
And I would say, you know, I'm for this development, anything we can do to be business-friendly and to have economic development in the community. I'm just a little bit worried that all of a sudden this feels like this fence is getting sprung on the developers, and I'm worried about it, potential negative consequences. So that's just my thoughts on the matter.
Financial consequences.
I guess, correct.
Pardon? Yes, is somebody going to second his?
I'll second.
All right. Brian Leslie, Brian Leslie second. Okay, so we need a vote on the first motion to recommend to council approval with the condition of 38.
You vote on the amendment first.
Vote on the amendment first, all right. We vote first on the amendment to the rezone of adding, of recommending to council that we, that the developers add a back fence, wooden or masonry. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Justin. Okay. And now back to the original motion to recommend to a council that we approve this rezone with the addition of, the condition that they have screening between the residential areas and that the building height be limited, limited to 38 feet. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No, Justin. Okay, that moves, that passes. Now we will head back to the first item on the agenda, which is actually case number SB 2019-006. This item has actually been pulled by the applicant. They are withdrawing request. They wanted to look into some legal matters. So that item is off our agenda. So moving on to case number SB 2019-007. Applicant Vaquero Stevieville Partners LP is requesting a subdivision waiver from section 154.11, parking spaces for vehicles to be instructed at 2275 West Lingleville Road, being lot one and two, block seven of the Oak Tree Addition to the city of Stevieville, Erazo County, Texas. Karen.
So the applicant is requesting a variance to the code requirement of 9.5 foot wide parking spaces. They would like to provide nine-foot wide parking spaces on this site as it would allow them to provide additional spaces for cars and to allow them to meet the current parking code based on square footage of the building. They have had success with many projects with their national, national tenants using the standard nine-foot parking and would like to continue to use the size on this project. The site is particularly challenging because of its size and the creek on its northwestern boundary. The size of the site is limiting the amount of space that they have to work with to meet the parking requirements. The property is currently ZONE B1 neighborhood business. The parking requirement is 9.5. Staff has no objections to the nine-foot parking space.
Thank you, Karen. You're welcome. We're not going to open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor? Thank you. And did you fill, you did.
I did.
Could you state your name and address for?
Kelly Agnor. I work for Vaquero Ventures, a developer. 2900 Wingate Street, Suite 200, Fort Worth, Texas. Yeah, I, she basically outlined everything for us that we had put into our application for this variance. We have a pretty small oddly shaped site that sits right next to a creek. We're currently going through the LOMER process with FEMA to try to pull some of that land out of the flood zone. So we're working with really tight constraints here, so we would really appreciate y'all's support in narrowing the spaces by half a foot so that we can get additional parking spaces to meet the parking requirements per city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak opposed? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that this be approved under one condition, that one of these three areas designated as parking should remain at the 9.5 foot because there's going to, on Lingleville Road, you're getting a lot of people with pickups, with duly's, and they need a bigger spot. And I think there should be some spots that are, remain the larger size.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. I know that it kind of fits your mold nationally, but here in Stevieville, if you take a look at the number of pickups that are here in town, it, it doesn't make sense to do this. And you can't fit a pickup into a lot of the parking places here in town that have already gone to that size.
One second. The motion was Brewster later, the second was Brian Leslie. Yes, please come up to the podium.
Do you know how many of these you would like for us to widen to the 9.5?
Just, just one. You've got four designated parking areas here.
Yes, sir.
And I say just one of them. It appears that the ones that were elongated here to, to the right on the drawing.
Can I approach you?
Page 18.
Okay, this is what, this drawing here is in the policy of the city or city owner.
Yes, we don't usually have.
Okay.
How many, how many parking places are you, are you going to have?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
A lot.
I would, I wish you would make at least, maybe, let's make it 10.
Okay, this is Lingleville.
10, or, or less, less like a 10 and a half.
If we do go forward with some additional parking spaces that are wider, we might have to lower our parking count and then not meet the parking count requirements per square foot.
How close are you to the parking count requirement?
They have one parking space more than what's required.
At the eight, at the?
At the nine foot.
It's not a lot of room, so.
Well, then I, I would say use that extra nine foot and add, add a half a foot to, to eight places. It appears to me that this would be the best location because we have a lot of trucks, a lot of duly pickup trucks that haul horse trailers, and if you give them room to back out, this would be the spot that has the most room to back out of their spots, to pull in wide and to back out. Because duly's are generally longer than other vehicles as well. So if, if four or five spots here were designated for duly's or something to that effect, I, I think you would have a lot better, a lot better facilities for people that, that you're going to be attracting.
Yeah, so if we got rid of one of these parking spaces, we might be able to widen the other ones without 9.5 and still meet the parking requirement?
Yeah, right now you have one more than what's required.
Okay, then we could probably do that along this room right here?
I would say, yes. That, that would be the most convenient because, like I say, duly's are generally longer and backing out of one of these spots is much more difficult than backing out of one of these spots.
Okay, so Bruce, I think I need an amendment from you to specify the number that you just said of, of how many parking spaces you think need to be at the nine and a half feet.
Well, she said there's one more than the minimum required.
Right, so how, how many did you just discuss? What was?
I think he said nine of them is how many.
Is that what?
Well, I just said if, if you take, if you take nine, take one spot out and add that extra half a foot to.
I'm just trying to get specific for the motion.
Right.
So was it nine spots at nine and a half? Or eight?
How many do you want?
No, I didn't. It doesn't make any difference to me. It's just that you need some spots that are, that are wider to accommodate the duly's, and I showed her on the map or on the.
Do you want to see it?
How many, how many spots are you looking at?
So there are 10 right there. So if we got rid of one of them and then made all of the rest of them a little bit bigger, we could do, I think, nine.
Nine, okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
It's for staff. What is, do you know by chance what the current width of the parking spaces are in front of AT&T?
I do not. I could find out.
Because those are tight.
That's that little.
And you can barely get a car in and out of those. And I'm thinking those probably can't be more than nine feet.
Well, they might have come for a wa, I mean, I can't speak on another case. They could have gotten a waiver on the parking.
I was looking up standard, standard widths, and nine feet was what came up again and again. So nine feet, I believe, is pretty.
For a car.
Well, then to make it easy for him, I make an amendment that we choose 10 to get, to remain at nine and a half, recommendation to council.
Or nine, because that, that.
Then I make the recommendation that we, we keep nine at nine and a half feet. That's the amendment.
All right.
Is there a second? I don't know.
I got a second.
Todd McAvoy motioned and seconded by Vance Wade.
Can I repeat this, make sure we got it?
Yes, please.
So Todd amended the motion to take one spot out and accommodate nine spaces at nine and a half feet. Vance seconded that motion?
Correct.
Minimum.
Yes.
All right, let's vote. All those in favor of recommending to council that we approve, eliminating one, or just having nine parking spaces at nine and a half feet, the rest at nine. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Now back on to the original motion. The motion was to approve allowing nine feet on all the rest of the parking spots. That we recommend to council approval of that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that goes forward.
Madam Chairman, I have a question. So you have two motions?
We had a.
An amendment.
Amendment to the motion.
We had to amend because we weren't sure the number that we needed, so we just made it on.
And based on her map, it works out just perfectly.
Okay. Next item. Okay, I didn't, is it, is it Kermit Gutters? Okay. Okay, so the next is?
Or easement dedication service.
See, I knew I went too far.
SB 2019-008.
Thank you, okay. Applicant Vaquero Stevensville, sorry, case number SB 2019-008. Applicant Vaquero Stevensville Partners LP is requesting a subdivision waiver from section 155.6.08, easements and dedications to be constructed at 2275 West Lingleville Road, being lot one and two, block seven of the Oak Tree addition to the city of Stevensville, E wrath County, Texas. Karen.
Applicant is requesting a waiver to the restrictions of dumpster pads, parking retaining wall, paving, grading, and landscaping, and sewer and utility easement. They think that this waiver is necessary as the site is really small and the creek flood zone is limiting their space for improvements. Applicant states they will not interfere with use and maintenance of the current sewer and utility line. Staff does not object to allowing the applicant to have parking, paving, grading, or a grass area in the utility easement. But we do not support the waiver to allow the dumpster pads or the retaining wall as these are considered structures.
Thank you Karen. Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Would you like to speak in favor?
I'm going to be up here a little bit tonight. I don't know, do you have like where it shows where we actually approach into the easement areas? You guys have that information?
It's kind of hard to read.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's real hard.
Yeah.
It's on your drawing, on your site plan.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you guys.
So along our northwestern boundary where it lies against the creek, there's currently easements that run along that property line that were put in place via plat back for day. Currently, we have the sewer line marked and none of our improvements will be built over or around the current existing utilities. You can see a little dash line here where it kind of encroaches. And then our dumpster pad encroaches. And we have like a small retaining wall right here because of the slopes in that area to keep that up and as part of our Lomer process, trying to pull some of that out of the creek area where it was.
So how, how much should it encroach?
It looks to be five to seven feet.
Sorry. Five to seven feet, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else?
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else to add?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in favor? Is anybody wishing to speak opposed? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, I need a motion so we can discuss.
I'll make the motion. That we can discuss the, the request. Well, staff does not support the waiver to allow the dumpster pads or retaining wall. I think we need to discuss that and see.
So Madam Chairman, I would make a recommendation that Meta's motion be approval with?
With the conditions, that those should not be allowed, with those conditions.
Okay, I'll make that, that motion, yes.
That motion, okay. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have Meta making the motion. I have Brian Leslie making the second. Okay, so five to seven feet encroachment. Are we okay or not okay with that?
I don't think, I don't know. I'll speak. I don't think that it causes any, I would like to, I would, I don't support the current motion on the floor due to the fact that the sewer line is not near. Yeah, there's an easement, but we're not planning on putting another sewer line or water line right next to that. We can still do the repairs that need to be done on that sewer line in the alleyway. I don't, I don't, I, I, what, what is staff's theory on not having it? If we're going to encroach five feet, but we're not going on top, when it's like we have to dig up concrete to get to the sewer line, what's the staff's concern?
Part of what the city has adopted in the engineer's standards manual states that there cannot be anything but grass area built on top of the utility easement. No fences, no structures.
But you're supporting the way?
If we go in and we have to do any repairs and we remove anything, it is not up to us to put that back into place.
But it's an expense to us to have to pull it.
That's correct.
And so?
Nick, Nick is here, if y'all would like to speak with public works, so.
I'd just like to reiterate Ms. Wilkinson's position, the staff's position, that we do not support having any structures within the sewer line easement. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have about that.
You support the parking lot, but you don't support?
Public Works does not support any structures within the sewer line easement. Like, I can't speak to anything that's not Public Works related.
It says in here, the staff doesn't have objection to the paving.
To paving, grading, and grass.
Paving and the grading and grass. You don't have any problem with them encroaching on far as paving, pavement?
That's pretty standard. Paving within a parking lot is pretty standard over, over easement.
Well, what's the concern then with the dumpster pad? Because that's paving too.
It's a dynamic loading due to garbage trucks. It's typically a much, typically a much heavier load. Also, I know that screening is required around those dumpster pads. We don't want to have any fences on top of the sewer line easement. It's not a matter of if it breaks, just when it breaks.
Fair enough.
Thank you Nick.
It was the retaining wall, dumpster pad retaining wall.
If, if, if the council wasn't to approve your waiver, and the council didn't approve to support that, where, what would be the plan to move your dumpster to the front?
There really isn't one. This site limits us like a large amount in where, where we can put things and where we can maneuver things. I don't really, I mean, we don't want to put it up front because A, a truck can't come and pick up the trash in the front. It looks terrible.
And your staff has to prepare it from the front.
But your stormwater storage area, is there a way you could redesign it to go further back to the back of the property to where you can move the dumpster possibly?
Flood plain issues is what we run into if we start moving further back or even further to the creek because we are very limited of how much we can actually pull out of the flood. We pull out as much as we possibly can. And we just don't have a whole lot of room here to maneuver much of anything. I'm not trying to make y'alls decision impossible. It's just, we're dealing with a very tight site.
And let me remind our commissioners that our job is to approve, recommend approval, approval with conditions or deny. So our job is not to fix the problem.
Correct. Yeah, but if it makes it into a hardship, you kind of got to know.
He said if it makes it into a hardship, undue hardship.
But they have, I mean, they would have to prove that case to y'all?
Yeah. Well, they would.
I would, I would like to make amendment to the motion on that if, that if these are placed in the spot that is in this drawing that does impinge on the easement that should any repairs be required, that the developer will foot the bill.
Well, that's, that's already in the case. That, that's already stated by the city that anything done?
Then I, I certainly have no objection to it. If, if that's the case.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this? So?
So we're voting, go ahead.
We're, we're going to, the motion that stands is that we move to recommend to council approval of, of this waiver for parking, paving, grading, and grass area. But we do not recommend approval for the dumpster pad or the retaining wall. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is three. Me, Meta, and Bill. Oh, and Cliff. Those, those against?
No.
We've got Bruce, Vance, Brian, Todd, and Justin. So I, one, two, three, four, five, so that wins. So? Do we need another motion then to move to council? So?
No.
Madam Chair, can you?
Yes.
Repeat the second one? I have Bruce, Vance, Todd, Justin.
Vance, Todd, no, Brian, Todd, and Justin. We're all against.
So the motion failed.
The motion failed. So I need another motion.
I move that we approve 2009-08, 2019-08 with no grant easement restriction.
In its entirety.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So that was moved by Todd, seconded by Justin. Yes, recommend to council. Okay, so the, the current vote is a recommend to council that we approve the subdivision waiver for?
As a current standard.
For current, for, for parking, paving, grading, grass, dumpster pads, and retaining wall. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's just get a vote here. So we've got Bruce, we've got Vance, we've got Brian, we've got Todd, and we've got Justin. Those opposed? So we've got Cliff, Lisa, Bill, and Meta. So that goes forward with approval. So that goes to the city council and then they make their decision. Okay, next item. Is? Case number SB 2019-009. Applicant Vaquero Stevensville Partners LP is requesting a subdivision waiver from section 155.6.04 M1, curb and gutter requirement, to be constructed at 2275 West Lingleville Road, being lot one and two, block seven of the Oak Tree addition to the city of Stevensville, E wrath County, Texas. Karen.
Applicant is requesting a waiver on the installation of sidewalks and curb and gutter. This case is just the curb and gutter. The reason for the waiver request for installation of curb and gutter is because the nearest curb is 1,511 feet southeast from the site and gutters are approximately 1,600 to 1,800 feet southeast of the site. Adding curb and gutter to this site will be inconsistent with the other properties in its vicinity. At current condition, half of existing farm to market road, eight Lingleville Highway drains to the roadway ditch and eventually discharges to existing channel on the northwest side of proposed Dollar General site. The applicant believes installing curb and gutter along farm to market road eight will alter the drainage pattern and they would like to apply for the waiver to not install the curb and gutter. Staff does not support this waiver as curb and gutter is a requirement per city ordinance.
Thank you Karen. Now going to open a public hearing. Anybody here who wish to speak in favor of this? Thank you.
Oh, we came here tonight to kind of plead our case on the curb and gutter. Sidewalk will come later. The way that this site, that we've graded this site to create the drainage and stuff along the frontage, installing curb and gutter, there's nowhere for us to tie into at this point in time. It's thousands of feet away from us for us to even be able to tie in the curb and gutter as it stands today. We plan on all of our discharge going into the channel that is immediately next door to us. We feel like that is the best route at this point in time because it's inconsistent with what's there currently.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in favor of this waiver? Does anybody wish to speak opposed? All right, closing the public hearing. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that the waiver be approved or that we recommend approval, I should say.
I'll second.
To the city council.
All right, so it's Bruce Delater, motioned, and Justin Allison second. Okay, discussion. Todd, you have something to say?
Yeah, to ask a question Karen.
No, that's fine.
Is this the same situation where there's a bar ditch in the front that we voted on a couple of weeks ago or months ago with the?
With the church?
With the church? Is that the same situation?
Yep.
So it would be off the road?
Yep.
Twenty something feet?
Yeah, long ways off.
Okay, but consider this. This area is all going to get developed. You've got the apartment complex right next to it. You've got people who are going to be wanting to walk there. I know we're not talking about sidewalks right now, but next to sidewalks are curb and gutters. There are all sorts of people who walk up and down Lingleville. I know because I drive that, because that's where I live. And people are always just kind of meandering off the road and in the, the grassy areas. Dangerous? And you put a Dollar General there? Those, those kids, everybody's going to want to go walk all over there because it's right next to that apartment complex. I really feel it's a safety issue and that it makes sense for this area that is going to be developed, that we put in curb and gutter.
But that's a curb, not a sidewalk.
But sidewalks coming next. I'm going to be making another argument on that.
Yeah, but the curb, and we understand your argument, so I'm with you. But I want to understand that the curb doesn't touch, doesn't?
It never touches the pavement.
The curb is something that goes on the street. That, that, but, but enters the street. We're never going to be able to put a curb next to that because that's not our street.
But our?
It's not like a residential street where we can control what goes on the side of it. That's a state road.
That's a state roadway.
They're the ones who's deciding that. In fact, if they want to put curb in, they will whenever they want to.
Karen, can you speak to this? I mean, this is an issue we came up to again before. I mean, he's arguing that we don't even have the, the right to do it.
All I can do is say what I did before. You know, Washington is a text on highway. It has curb and gutter. That curb and gutter goes way beyond, you know, tractor supply. So it's basically y'all's recommendation to council whether y'all want to uphold what's in the city ordinance or if you want to give the waiver.
Well, again, I'm looking toward the future. I'm seeing a future where this is all developed.
They are text on roads, but the city does have, I mean?
I mean, once upon a time was Washington a ditch? You know, was, and that was developed. And, and I am just looking 20 years in the future. What do we want this road to look like? It's getting developed. This is the edge of Stevensville. This is where we are growing. So it makes sense to put the infrastructure in now when we can rather than after the fact be like, oh, there's nothing here and it's too late, we can't do it because nobody else did it.
I'm kind of confused, Madam Chairman. And this is where my confusion. We're going to have a curb sitting way out there, you know, and then we're going to have a bar ditch about, what, probably 15, 20 feet? Okay, so your curb is going to be even away from the road itself. Okay?
Karen, is that what it's going to look like?
If you require a curb, that's where it's going to be. It, it's going to be. So in my opinion, I think that would, that would look very strange. It would not even be consistent with anything in Stevensville.
And then when text out decides to widen that highway,
And then when text doc decides to widen that highway, they're gonna tear up that curb and replace it.
Well. The curb part, I mean, per the site plan that has been presented, the curb would go out to Lingleville Highway. It would be where their drive is. Their drive into that.
So it would go right out to Lingleville?
Mm-hmm. It's not gonna be at the property line.
Confused.
So that wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be a bar ditch? You're saying it goes straight out to Lingleville?
So you're talking about the entrance having a curb?
Yes.
Not, not the property boundary on the highway.
No, the curb and gutter goes out to the road where your drive, where your curb cut is, your driveway.
Okay, well, I'm, yeah, I'm confused, 'cause like, when we talked about the church, we asked that question, they had to put curb and gutter all the way back through. We asked the same question, we said, no, we're not talking about the entrance, we're talking about linear horizontal is what we got told. And now we're talking about it's the entrance, so that makes.
Well, that was a different project because they're, they're having the roadway out on Alexander Road. That roadway is not developed yet. So there would be the street, there would be the text on roadway and then their property, you know, where they're beginning.
Okay.
This one is developed. So that street is developed, that highway is developed, so their curb is going to be coming to the, where the street is. It's gonna meet the street.
Well, they have, they have an easement from the city, the state has an easement on that. We can't put a, a curb on the city, on the state, right?
Well, think about what, the, the, um, what's the name of that home, the, the? You've got the apartments, you've got, um, Oak Tree. They've got a curb right on the street.
I don't think Oak Tree does.
No.
No?
No.
No. No.
No. It's, it's all.
The apartments is just, is just, uh, grass.
And I, and I don't believe that the, uh, retirement on there either has that.
See this, okay, is, do we have any of this up here? Karen? Do we have any of the stuff in our packet down, up?
No.
Okay.
It was, I thought I had it on the slideshow, but I'm.
Okay, yeah, on our agenda, on our agenda page, I'm not sure the page number.
No.
It has where the, um, the future land use map is what I'm looking at roughly, yeah.
Oh, that one's up there.
Okay, and it has, I'm assuming that that, the reason why there's no zones there is because that's a state right of way. Right on this picture right there, I'm assuming that's the state right of way, correct?
Well, so our GIS mapping.
There you go.
Yep.
Yes, our GIS mapping only does parcels, so it's not going to do any kind of, um, easement or anything that we have on the state highway or public streets for that matter. It's just gonna do the parcel which is on the appraisal district, what you pay taxes on.
Okay.
But that is state right of way, we had to get a text op permit.
And text op already has requirements for your.
You're saying this is state right of way?
Yes.
And this is where your, this is, this is where the curb would be?
Mm-hmm. She, she would've had to get a, a driveway permit.
But the, is the driveway gonna be curbed?
Yes. Don't have a curb, just.
Right, it'll be, it's where you turn in, right? There's gonna be a curb to keep people from going in the yard.
Yeah, text op, text op controls that.
Right, don't make them do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But as far as running the linear length of the property, is the curb that we're discussing right now, is that correct?
So after any other development, when they have their curb cut or their driveway cut, that curb and gutter goes from property line to property line.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And that would be right up at the road. The curb would be right at the road.
Where their driveway cut comes in, yes.
It would continue along.
Yes.
Okay, so is everyone clear on that? It would go straight up to the road right where the driveway hits.
Just like, just like Graham Street.
Okay. Okay, so this is different than the case we had before. We're all clear on that? The church.
I know, it's the same, it's the same.
No, no, they're saying that this, Karen just said that the curb would go straight out to the road and would continue along.
Just on the drive.
That's text op.
No, that's the right. What she said, what Karen's saying is right, is it's gonna come in, Karen?
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna turn in, that's gonna be curbed. It gonna go up to where their property line starts and the curb's gonna go again. Like a T or whatever.
My understanding that the curb and gutter is gonna be along Lingleville Highway.
Strictly along, not, not, not bar ditch and then curb.
No, where the driveway cut is, then it'll be curbed from property line to property line.
So it's on Lingleville Highway.
That's correct.
Not, not, not bar ditch curb.
Yeah, okay, if we, if this passes, we'll have to get special permits from text op to install that stuff.
Okay.
So let me make, make sure I'm clear on this. You're telling me the curb is gonna be right here, like, all the way down, we're gonna have a cutout here, then we're gonna have a bar ditch and then you're gonna have a?
Then you have a park.
Gonna have a bar ditch behind the curb?
Correct.
So bar ditch be behind the curb, on curb and gutter.
That's correct.
So really, truly. You're hurting the drainage. Yeah, you're gonna hurt the drainage.
That really screws up the drainage.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because you're not gonna be dumping it here. You're just gonna force to the next person?
Because there's not any.
And then you're gonna get at the end of the curb and it's gonna cut in towards the bar ditch and, uh.
And that's a, that's a safety.
Cut it going.
If the sidewalk were to be put in, where does the sidewalk go? Right next to the curb, what happens to the bar ditch?
The sidewalk has to be on right of way. It cannot be on, I mean, it's not on public property, it's on the right of way.
So what happens to the ditch?
We'd have to grade it significantly to get the sidewalk in that area.
So essentially the, the ditch goes?
Uh, it would become, yes, a lot smaller.
I have a question. If, and, and there again, this goes back to aesthetics. If we could just require, not require gutter, we could just require a curb and forget the gutter, right here, a square curb, you see what I'm saying? Then you have a cutout, then you go and say you have your cutout, wherever you have your cutout. You have a curb on the property line, then you leave the bar ditch open, but forget the gutter on the curb. See what I'm saying? Just a, just a six inch curb, forget the gutter. That's, if we had required a curb on the property line and that still would require the ditch here, don't put curb and gutter out here because that, that's gonna look really strange. Put a curb from property line to property line, if we're so gonna start requiring that.
Yeah, you're talking about a ribbon curb? I think, side note, that, that we need more guidance on this issue, on exactly where the curb, curb and gutter is gonna look like. And, and obviously this has come up again and again, and I think staff needs to get together and, and come up with a plan on what this is gonna look like because there's just too much confusion.
I have a, I own Lacy Funeral Home and we're, we have a curb, so you, you'll see on our property line, I do have a curb. I do not have a gutter there. And we have two driveways in our property and we still have the bar ditch, which we, we maintain. That helps control the water, keeps the water inside the ditch itself, okay?
So you have a curb?
I have a curb on my property, if, if this was the funeral, I have a curb, I would cut out here and I have curves all the way down my property line. And nothing out on the street. The street is just, looks just like this here.
So it goes curb, ditch, street?
It would be the funeral, our building's here, the property goes here and our curb's all the way down here. Now, for aesthetics, that looks good. I don't have, and, and before, this was nine, this is a state highway nine fourteen. So if I was required to put a curb here, I would've blocked all the water coming from both ways. See?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so. Okay, the current motion that stands, if we're done discussing, is.
Now, I don't know what you're discussing.
I, 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 I.
So Bruce made a recommendation for approval of case.
Approval of this waiver.
That's correct. Justin seconded.
Okay, so, uh, we currently have a motion to recommend to council that we approve waiving curb and gutter for this property. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so let's get a count there. We've got Bruce, we've got, uh, Wade Vance, no, we've got Todd McAvoy, we've got Bill Mutzy and we've got Justin Allison. All those opposed? We've got Cliff, we've got Brian, Lisa and Meta. What does that come out to?
Five to four.
Five to four, motion passed.
Motion passes, so that moves on to council for approval. Okay, so we recommend of approval. Okay, next item. Is, uh, case number SB two zero one nine dash zero one zero. Applicant for Caro Stevenville Partners LP is requesting a subdivision wa- waiver from section one five five point six point one one, sidewalk requirement to be constructed at twenty-two seventy-five West Lingleville Road being lot one and two, block seven of the Oak Tree addition to the city of Stevenville, Ehrath County, Texas. Karen?
Applicant is requesting a waiver on the installation of sidewalks and curb and gutter. The reasoning for the waiver request on sidewalks is because Lingleville Road currently has no sidewalks along any of its frontage and the addition of sidewalks to this side will create sidewalks that will not connect to any existing facility for pedestrians. There is an existing drainage di- ditch that runs along Lingleville Highway. With the proposed Dollar General development, we are adding a thirty-six foot driveway with eighteen inch RCP culvert to convey water to downstream channel. The slope in that ditch is four to one and depth is approximately three point five feet. They believe adding a sidewalk next to a three point five foot deep ditch is not safe and difficult to attain a slope requirement. Also, there is no existing sidewalk on either side of this development. We would like to request city to waive the requirement of sidewalk. Staff does not support the waiver as sidewalks are required per city ordinance.
Thank you, Karen. Let's open the public meeting, the public hearings. Uh, anybody wish to speak in favor of this waiver?
Uh, she did a good job explaining. I think we already kind of touched base on this one. I'm in favor of not doing the sidewalks. It doesn't seem like, um, constructing it would make sense with the current drainage in the area, so, um, thank you guys.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in favor? Does anybody wish to speak opposed? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll be the first. I move to deny the waiver.
Todd McAvoy.
Recommend to deny the waiver.
Okay, Todd McAvoy moves we deny. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian Leslie, seconds. Like I said before, I, I feel like, uh, I, I am concerned about the safety issues that you brought up with the ditch. Um, that's a problem, but it's gonna be a problem regardless because people from that, those apartments are gonna be walking over to that Dollar General and they're gonna be doing it either in the street or in the grass. And either way, it's not good. We need sidewalks. They will be walking to this Dollar General, one hundred percent. It's, it's going to be, uh, dangerous.
Well, I made the motion, so I would like to say that I support it, but I think that this is a particular case, again, on all of them. Not every time we get the, the, like, the one we did a couple of months ago, but on this one, the sidewalk, that is gonna be a major thoroughfare. It's like Frye Street, that was a disaster trying to get Frye, Frye Street sidewalks in there, we gotta take it care of. You gotta start going from there and Oak Tree's not gonna be there forever. I mean, I'm with you, it, it eventually will go or we'll, we'll make it a safety deal and we'll pay for it at our cost, the city will, but I'm with you. At some point, you gotta start, you gotta start expanding the network on sidewalks as we grow.
I agree. Are we ready to vote? Okay, uh, the motion stands that we recommend to council denying the waiver of sidewalks. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so opposed are Bruce, Vance and Justin. We good? Okay, so we will recommend to council that they not approve it, council will make the final decision. Okay. Moving on.
Eleven.
Where are we at?
Eleven, right here.
Okay, thank you. Case number RZ two zero one nine dash zero one one. Applicant William Dunson is requesting a rezone of property located at seven zero one Riverside Drive being lot one and three, part of one, block sixteen of the Clifton Heights addition to the city of Stevenville, Ehrath County, Texas, from B one neighborhood business to R two, one and two family.
So the applicant is requesting the rezone to demol- to demolish the existing structure and build a home. The proposed rezone is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Current zoning is B one neighborhood business, future land use is R one, single family, and his requested zone is R two, one and two family.
Thank you, Karen. Let's open this to a public hearing. Is anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone? Anybody here who wishes to speak against? All right, closing the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
I move to approve two thousand nineteen oh eleven with no restrictions, or I recommend to council.
I'll second.
Okay, so Todd McAvoy moves, and who seconded? Uh, Wade Vance. I'm, I'm, I was confused driving this area because the, um, all around there, that, it's not zoned correctly, right?
It's, it's all kinds of zones right now.
Yeah, it's all different places.
We had a case in the same neighborhood last month.
Last time, yeah.
Yeah, but that one was going from.
Well, it was about three blocks.
Yeah, that was in the middle of the neighborhood. This is, this is up by the townhomes and by the transmission muffler shop.
This is between the townhomes and the muffler shop.
Yeah, it's a little different.
So you've got at the one oh one site, it's zoned central business, but those are apartments, right? And then you've got, uh, the six hundred seven oh four, eight oh five, that's retail and commercial business, but that, those are homes. I mean, like, this is a hot mess, the zoning here. And I'm kind of confused, I, I mean, I know that the future land use is R one, but all these places were R two, all of them. When you drive through there, every single one. So it seems like, when I first saw this, I thought, no, that's crazy, but when I drove the area, it kinda makes sense.
Well, it would serve as a buffer as you go into the R ones.
Yeah. I mean, the, the one thing that stands out is the muffler place, that, that's the, the one.
That's, that's a neighborhood bruseness.
Right, right. So I, you know.
Can I, can I just make a friendly deal that it's not restrictions, it's conditions?
Okay.
Yeah.
No conditions.
Okay, council doesn't care if I say restrictions, they want conditions.
Anybody have, have a differing opinion? Anybody? Are we ready to vote? All right, so the motion that stands is a recommendation that we approve this rezone from neighborhood business to R two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Okay, so that moves forward with a recommendation to council. Okay. And the last thing on our agenda is case number RP two zero one nine dash zero zero one. Applicant city-centered townhomes Malcolm Canute is requesting, requesting a replat of L one M three D fifty-six of the city addition as reported in document number two zero one nine dash two zero six six nine eight of the official public records to the city of Stevenville, Ehrath County, Texas.
So the applicant submitted a concept plan on February fourteenth, twenty nineteen, and a development plan on March twentieth, twenty nineteen. This replat is the last required part of the planned development for city-centered townhomes. Applicant has approved construction plans dated November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, and a minor plat that was approved for four lots on the November eighteen, twenty nineteen, to allow his project to begin. Um, applicant is submitting the replats shown today for the entire planned development.
Thank you. Let's open a public hearing. Is anybody here wishes to speak in favor of this replat? I know Malcolm's here, do you have anything?
I'll answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak opposed? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to be approved.
Okay.
Bruce Delater.
Recommend approval.
Bruce Delater makes the motion, Medi Collier seconds. Do we need a discussion? I think this is pretty cut and drawn. Okay, uh, the motion is to approve the, uh, replat on this property, uh, or recommend to council approval of the replat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, uh, that moves forward with recommendation to approve to council. And if I'm not mistaken, that ends this here meeting. May, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Meta is a move.
Okay, seconds all around, we're done.